I would like to welcome everyone to the February 12th meeting of the Franklin Historic Zoning Commission, and I would like to call the meeting to order at this time. I'm the vice chair and I will be chairing the meeting this evening. My name's Mary Pierce. I want to say that I had the occasion this afternoon to visit with the staff to go over the meeting, and you all, it is raining buckets in their offices, so I'm very excited to contemplate a new City Hall. The working conditions are unbelievable, and my hat's off to you all. Thank you. Can we entertain a motion to approve the January 8th, 2024 minutes?
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Are there any announcements from any of the commissioners or staff?
Yes, we have a regularly scheduled Design Review Committee meeting next Monday, February 19th, at 4:00. And additionally, we have scheduled a Design Review Committee site visit on February 27th at 3:00, and it is at 231 Miles Manor, or locally known as Jasmine Grove.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Citizen comments. This is open to citizens, to be heard on any issues or concerns. If you would like to speak on a specific item on the agenda, please wait until the citizen comment period for that item. For all citizen comments, please, I think several of you have, fill out the speaker card, and if you'll just hand it to staff, they will walk it up here. And then, when the item is called for citizen comments, if you'll just come to the microphone and state your name, address, and limit your comments to two minutes. Thank you. Please, let's see. That's it. Okay. We will go to item two, which is consideration of side alterations at 331 Franklin Road, Harlinsdale Farm.
Okay, so this application previously appeared before the Historic Zoning Commission in November of 2023 and was approved. In January 2024, this application returned to the Design Review Committee for feedback on an alteration to the plans. The site alteration entails a stamped concrete walkway along a proposed multi-use path. The 400-foot-long stamped concrete walkway features an already-approved stamp of a train track pattern that pays homage to the historic interurban rail line that went through Harlinsdale Farm. This application proposes a solid monotone stamp and a background to all be featured in one color Yosemite stand. The previously-approved plans featured a blue-gray background with a stamp featuring colored elements. The proposed alteration to the approved plan meets the guidelines and is respectful to the context of the buildings, their setting, and the surrounding district. Staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. If the applicant would like to introduce himself.
David Hoddan at Work City Franklin Engineering Department. I'm the project manager over at the Harlinsdale Farm project.
And do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, the DRC was very receptive to our new proposal of just leaving it the same color as the walkway, and this will have a two five-foot panels on each side, and the train track stamping will be right in the middle. So you'll kind of walk up to that, and then you'll see the impression there in the concrete. So I think this looks better than the one we presented with the colors, and I think it pays a tribute to the interurban a lot better. And Parks has signed off on this, and we also signed off on it, too.
Thank you. Are there any citizens that want to speak to this application? No? Would any one like to entertain a motion on the application?
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not?
Looks good.
Good, okay. All those in favor of the motion as seconded say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, David. Okay, consideration of side alterations at 117 Third Avenue North. Emily, if you wanted to give the staff presentation.
Yes. So this application includes the proposal for a series of alterations at 117 Third Avenue North. I'll first start with the pergola addition. So a portion of this application includes the new pergola to be constructed. There is an existing pergola on the site, and while the new pergola will be larger in size, it will be located on the interior of the property and will not be highly visible from street view. As proposed, the new pergola meets the intent of the guidelines. For the accessory structure, the application indicates the proposal to replace the non-historic roof and replace areas of the cement board siding. These changes are supported as these materials are non-historic to the structure. New French doors are proposed to replace the triple panel of doors. This change is also supported as the doors are non-historic. For the cooler screening, based on feedback from the DRC meetings, the screening inside the structure has been set back 12 inches, and the screening utilizes eight-foot vertical fence boards to screen the equipment. For the new fence, the application includes the proposal to replace the existing fence with a new six-foot vertical board fence. The height, material, and location are all appropriate within the guidelines. For the new concrete, a new portion of the application includes the proposal to pour a new concrete patio under the proposed pergola. This alteration will not be seen from street view and is appropriate within the guidelines. For the artificial turf, the application proposes to utilize artificial turf in the rear yard. While the use of this turf is not typical to the historic districts, it will be located behind the fence and will not be visible from street view. Staff recommends approval of this application with conditions. And there are a couple of project considerations, and the first one is to be advised that all the parking must be provided for the new use. And if the fence is eight feet in height, engineered plans and a building permit will be required through the Building and Neighborhood Services Department. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Would the applicant, Brandon, introduce yourself?
It's Brandon. Hi, I'm Brandon Pretty with 906 Studio Architects, representing the entity. Available to answer the questions.
Do you have anything you would want to add?
No, appreciated everybody's feedback at DRC. Made a couple tweaks, did some things on the overall plan we were showing there to clarify the scope of what's proposed, and look forward to your consideration. Ready to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any citizens that want to speak to this project? Okay. Is there anyone who would like to entertain a motion on the application?
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So just to clarify, was that a move to approve as is or with staff conditions?
With staff conditions.
Conditions, okay.
And I can second that as well.
And you second it with staff conditions?
Right.
Okay. Is there any conversation or other comments? Okay.
Just say thank you for bringing that site plan. It's always been disorienting to me, and I think where it's located is definitely in the commercial part of kind of the district. And parking lot around it seems shielded well, so I feel good about it.
About it. Well, are there any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We are on number four, consideration of alterations, windows and doors at 221 Lewisburg Avenue. And if the staff would like to give their presentation.
Thank you. This proposal appeared before the Design Review Committee in January of 2024. The house at 221 Lewisburg Avenue is in the Lewisburg Avenue Historic District, but is not designated a contributing residential building. The current application proposes a series of alterations to the rear of the principal building. This application proposes to alter two door openings on the rear elevation into window openings. Currently, both openings lead out onto a rear-facing covered porch. The first door on the rear facade leading from the kitchen is proposed to be altered into a window opening. The second door alteration on the rear of the primary bedroom entails shifting the window to the left of the door, a little over to the right, and enclosing the remaining space with matching siding. By utilizing the existing openings and the alterations being located on the rear of the building, the application meets the intent of the guidelines. Additionally, the application proposes to replace a window on the rear facade with a triple casement window above the kitchen sink. The condition of the window or the estimate of the age was not provided. This application proposes to utilize the existing window space and window material that is typical of the neighborhood and existing home. This proposal meets the intent of the guidelines. The application proposes to replace the French doors in the dining room. The proposal to replace the French doors is appropriate due to its location on the rear facade. The application proposes to enclose a window on the rear facade due to a closet proposed within the house. The application includes two options for the enclosure. The first option is to enclose with matching siding to what is existing, and the second option is to enclose and apply a faux shutter in the location of the existing window. The enclosure of the window and the utilization of a faux shutter do not meet the intent of the guidelines. Staff recommends denial of the enclosure of the closet window on the rear facade based on the following grounds: to maintain a traditional solid-to-void ratio on building walls that is similar to those seen on historic buildings in the district; and staff recommends approval of the alteration of the kitchen door and primary bedroom door into windows; the replacement of the window in the kitchen; and the replacement of the French doors with conditions.
Thank you. If the applicant would want to come forward and get your comments, introduce yourself.
Hey, I'm Madeline Wyatt, and I'm the general contractor for this project. After meeting with you guys at the DRC meeting, I tried to give you all a little bit more clarity, some pictures of the exterior. You all were responsive about basically all the changes that we're wanting to do are on the back of the house, and this is a non-conforming house within the historic district. So hopefully, the adjustments helped you understand a little bit better.
Thank you. Are there any citizens who wish to comment on this application? If not, would someone like to entertain a motion for the application?
Yeah, I think I'm inclined to agree with staff and begin with the recommendation to deny the enclosure of the closet window on the rear facade.
And to approve the rest of it?
And to approve the rest of it, yes.
Okay. With staff comment?
Unless you want to do it in two separate motions.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, why don't we take it in two chunks?
That's fine.
The first being the denial.
Okay, the first would be to consider the staff recommending denial of the alteration on the window on the back facade.
That's correct.
And you're recommending to deny?
Yes.
Is that correct? So is there a second? Well, that dies for the life of a second. So now we will consider the rest of the application, which would be to approve the other alterations, including the rear window, which goes against?
Somebody will have to make that motion?
Yes, someone would have to make that, but that's where we are now.
Yes, right now we're having a motion to approve everything.
Yes.
Okay.
And going against the staff recommendation on the one item.
I would like to amend the staff recommendation on the door removal in the back to include it, and my conjecture is that this staff report says it's a non-contributing structure, plus you can't see it from any direction unless you're standing behind the yard, and I don't see where that would be something that would impede.
So Commissioner Barrett, it sounds to me like you would like to make a motion to approve, which would be against the staff recommendation.
Right, exactly, yes.
And I would second that motion.
Motion to approve?
Approve the rear?
Everything as proposed by the applicant.
Everything.
Things, and everything else, okay?
Exactly.
Correct.
Okay, and then you are seconding that?
Yes.
Okay.
For the same reasons that he reiterated for us.
Is there any other discussion about it?
I would like to have some discussion about it, simply because what you're saying on the rear, and I don't know what you were actually planning to do with that, change the exterior trim of the window and then have shutters, or just shutters that would fit in the existing trim?
So I was just trying to come up with a solution to where it would look like there's still a window while it's still being functional from the interior of the home. Since it is on the back in their closet, there really should be no reason for anyone to even see it from the back, or, I mean, from the street. So I was trying to come up with kind of a middle ground so that they can have their closet fully functioning while also it's still kind of looking like it could be a window. That was my solution.
And looking at your plan, the way the plan of the rooms would be, it looks like you kind of have two windows in that closet anyway, is that right?
That's correct.
And I know several times we have approved faux shutters in place of actually completely removing a window and adding new siding. And I think you're going in the right direction with that, and we have precedent from the past. But I would encourage keeping the existing window opening with the surround, so you know, with the trim that's around on the exterior, and just having shutters that would fit into that space, and then wall off the back so that you can have your closet space.
Okay.
But I think that would be best practice, because you have a lot of this trim around the house, at least on the back. And in the future, that could be reversed, too, if someone chose to do it.
Yeah. So are you offering that?
I would like to offer that as an amendment, that the trim, the exterior trim, remain, and that the shutters be made to fit that opening for the window.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I didn't really second that, and the reason being, it is on the back. I don't want to get in the business of telling them what to do on the back aesthetically. I think the question is the window, and like Bob had said, it's rear-facing. I think they're entitled to even addition. If they wanted to propose an addition, they could take that whole chunk of wall out and expand it. So we're telling them that they can't siding up an old window, which I don't even think is an old window. So I think we're telling them to faux a window that is already not a contributing house and not an old window, and so that's why I'm just not really in favor of telling them how to close the hole up personally.
And I don't want to tell them how to do things exactly either, but I do think it's best practice. And the window, to me, does look like, there are others, I think it probably is to that 1940s vintage at least, but thank you.
We've got an amendment, and it has not been seconded?
It has.
It has been seconded, okay. So all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
Okay. So I will vote in favor of the amendment.
So the amendment passes.
And just one more thing, do you guys want the staff conditions included, to include that the windows must have a historic profile with dimensions and be consistent of either wood or composite material?
It's Bob's motion.
Okay.
Commissioner Barrett?
And all of the other?
Yes.
Is that how you mean?
Yes.
So we now have the main motion as amended, including staff conditions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It passes. Okay, we are now to considerations of alterations of a dormer at 203 Second Avenue South. And if staff would like to give their presentation.
So this application proposes to add a shed dormer to the left elevation at 203 Second Avenue South. This building is located on the corner of Second Avenue South and Church Street, which makes the left elevation highly visible. The dormer is recessed two feet from the edge of the building, and it is located below the bridge line and is 32 inches from the sidewalls. The roof pitch is proposed to be 1/12. Guidelines recommend the following for dormers: to add dormers on the rear and side facades with minimal visibility, and the dormer roof pitch should be at least 3/12. As proposed, the application does not meet the intent of the guidelines. Staff recommends denial of the application based on the guidelines, to place dormers in locations with obscured visibility from the front facade or street. Dormer roof pitch should be at least 3/12 and no less than half of the main roof pitch, and dormer should be designed to be similar, yet subordinate in detailing scale width massing to existing dormers. If the commission approves the application, staff recommends conditions.
Thank you. Is there an applicant here?
Hey, good evening. It's Amanda McCrery with Chisel Workshop. So we've been before, you guys, before with this project for the addition off the back and then the dormer on the other side. So as we've continued with the design on this project, it is a little bit of a tighter space in the upper floor and looking to get a bedroom on this side of the property, hence the dormer we are suggesting today. I completely realize it is street-facing because we are a corner lot, but this is to the back and the side, the rear and the side of the main house, and it is behind the existing front gable. So you will not see it from the front, but we are a corner lot, so I do realize you'll see it from that side. And in a little bit of context, we are right beside the brownstones, so while we are adding a dormer street-facing, it's not going to seem large in context of the neighborhood because the pieces beside of us are much larger than even we are. The dormer is sized, this is the age-old question, I've been before you guys before with this, but we need to meet egress because it's a bedroom, which makes our windows to be of a certain size. So these are the smallest-sized windows we can get to meet egress, and it's playing off a little bit of the proportions that are on the gable-end windows and some of the windows in the front as well. We are a shed dormer, which is why we have the lower slope, but it is the same slope as the dormers that are on the right side, and this dormer is much smaller than the dormers that are on the right side because we realize this is street-facing.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Are there any citizens who wish to comment on this application? Okay, if there's not, is there anyone who would like to entertain a motion on the application?
Madam Chair, I move to deny the application per staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I feel like this is, I understand the necessity of it, obviously. You'd love to have egress, but it's hard for me to think that we would approve something side-street-facing, and it's a fairly public kind of view. And, you know, I think some spaces aren't necessarily, we're not tasked with figuring out the inside or any of it, but we can't make accommodations so that somebody can turn a room into a bedroom, but it be against kind of our guidelines, and I just, I don't feel good about that in relationship to those guidelines.
Okay, is there any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor of denying the application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're to item six on our agenda, which is consideration of alterations at 230 Franklin Road, the Factory Building 7. And if staff would like to do their presentation.
The applicant has returned to the Historic Zoning Commission with options for consideration of an alternative design element on Building 7, the Carousel Building at the factory. A COA was issued in February of 2023 for the construction of an accessory structure of mixed masonry and metal materials behind the main factory buildings. We'll hit the first item of the doors. This application proposes to utilize glazed coiling doors or traditional overhead doors as an alternative to the previously-approved vertical bifold doors. The glazed coiling doors have a narrower horizontal groove pattern. The traditional overhead doors have a wider tenlight pane pattern. The utilization of a traditional overhead door would be appropriate as previously-approved. The use of a glazed coiling door for the proposed alternative option would not be appropriate as it utilizes a more modern finish and appearance. As for the materials, this application proposes alternative materials for the facade. The COA from February of 2023 features a brick-clad building with gray masonry plinth at the base of the building. The current application proposes to utilize metal paneling in a matte-black steel color for the exterior with two alternatives for the base materials. The first base material option is a transstone architectural CMU masonry plinth in gray. The second proposed base material option is a reddish-brown brick base to match the adjacent historic brick that is seen on the factory campus. The factory features a mix of base materials, including brick and masonry on all of the buildings. The utilization of a matte-black metal paneling as the primary material for the structure is not appropriate. However, if approved, the utilization of a brick base on the Building 7 would be more appropriate and aligned with the guidelines to reflect the historic setting that it is seen on the factory. If the commission does not approve the new siding material presented, the facade materials and base materials will default to what was previously-approved in the COA from February of 2023, which featured a brick-clad building with a masonry plinth base. Transoms. The application proposes an alternative transom design to the previously-approved design for February of 2023. The currently-proposed transom appears minimally diminished in size and is appropriate. Staff recommends approval of the traditional overhead door and large transom windows with conditions. And staff recommends denial of the change in the primary facade material to matte-black metal paneling based on the following guidelines: to use materials and exterior finishes typically used in historic equivalents; and to use materials that are similar in character to nearby historic buildings, such as brick, stone, concrete, or painted or parched concrete blocks.
Thank you. Does the applicant please come forward?
Hello, everyone. I'm Gina Emanuel from Centric Architecture. I will explain quickly why we are asking you for this change after we were previously approved. We learned a lot about carousel construction. There is something that actually holds the animals that they all sit on. It's called a mechanism. We previously had a mechanism arranged. That vendor was no longer able to. We previously had a mechanism arranged, that vendor was no longer able to provide it, and we have now changed the mechanism that the animals will sit on. The previous building design was built in a way that the structure was strong enough to actually hoist the whole carousel up. We are thankful with this new mechanism, we do not have to do that, so the structure itself is now simplified. And since we were coming back to you all, we were looking at these changes. One of the items is the metal panel, so if you don't mind going to the site plan, Emily, it is the, really the first page. And here, I want to show you all why we chose this, if you want to go one more up. And this is the overall site plan here. If you all can see where it is labeled Building Five, and then you will see 11 and 12, which are the long buildings that go all the way to the site. If you sort of trace the edge of Building Five, for those of you that have been to the theater, that is the backside entry into the theater. That building has a brick base with metal panel. If you go all the way down the alley into the back entrance into Mojo's Tacos, all the way back to where Building 10 is at the rear of the site, all of that is a brick base with a metal panel above. Around the rest of the site and around the Turner Theater, you all have allowed us to paint the silver material, the black color. This carousel sort of sits directly in that area, that is kind of lined with that. Building Six, in addition to that, is also a metal panel building that is remaining. So that is why we changed the material. It also helps us with some of the constructability things we are working through. So we felt that was in keeping with what was surrounding the existing building. In regard to the coiling glass doors, we, and the overhead doors, we do like the overhead doors. There are some areas we cannot do that because the track that is required for the overhead door will actually hit the carousel itself, and so we are running into issues with that. We still want to be able to see in to the carousel, to see the animals when it is not open, and that is where the glass coiling door came from. If the glass coiling door was something you all did not feel is appropriate, we would like the flexibility to potentially change the heights of that coiling door. If it gets shorter and we have a transom above it, but still keeping a glass, we may be able to get it to work. That door is 10 feet, we may have to drop it to a nine-foot door with a transom above it, or we could make that whole opening storefront with two operable doors. So those are the other items we would like to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any citizens who wish to speak to this application? Would someone like to entertain a motion on the application?
Can we do it, parts and pieces?
We can.
I wrote down, we've got exterior materials, then there's the coiling doors, and transoms.
Why don't we start with the exterior materials?
That sounds good. Think about how to word this.
Mm-hmm.
So I suppose I would move to approve a COA for the brick base alternate version that has been submitted of the exterior finishes.
Okay, with the-
With the staff recommendations for, specific to the exterior materials.
That it be brick?
Brick base and the metal panel above.
Okay. Is-
So that's against the staff?
Yes.
Can you give us a reason?
Well, really, I'm not sure what to think about it yet, but I think Ms. Emanuel's presentation, considering that everything bordering it has brick base and metal upper, I think that seems congruent with the area, much more so than the concrete block version, which I don't think I'm in favor of, so I think this is somewhere in between and helps them get this thing built.
I'll second. Is there any other discussion?
So Emily, could you bring up on, it's page five, on the proposal, and I think this is actually a graphic, but that one that you see that says Carousel Building Area One, and can you kind of zoom in on that a little bit? Well, you know, what I'm noticing is that the building to the right and then the building to the left, those are brick buildings. And then the metal, the metal clad part would be to the very rear, and most of the public are going to park in that, the parking spaces here in the front, in the back part of the building, and I think their view is going to be the metal first, and I agree with staff that brick is a better option for, you know, for this location, and I think it is in better in keeping with the buildings to the right and left.
Can I clarify one item? Are we allowed to speak? Do you want to say something? On the right there, part of that is a wall instead of a building, and there are some pictures, if it's helpful for you all, there are some photographs of showing those buildings on page nine. So five, you know, the pictures that say Building Five and 11 will show you the ones that I sort of pointed out on the site plan, just for context. Building Eight, as you noted, Commissioner Lester, that is, that is the one, yes, that is brick with a concrete base, that is to one side of it, the other ones wrap around the other two sides of it.
I mean, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Lester said in that, I mean, I think the previous version was a little more permanent feeling, it had a little more presence just because of the brick, and I like the masonry version, I, you know, I heard the explanation from the applicant on why they're doing it, but I would imagine it's probably a pretty substantial cost savings too, which, you know, I don't know that for sure, but I, what I don't want in saying that is for it to be a cheapened version, and I understand, even though that might just be a brick wall, it is context that it sits within, so it's, yes, it has these metal buildings behind it, but it's got directly adjacent, almost just as many brick buildings or brick features almost touching it, so I'm sort of indifferent to it, but I do feel like it, what we're seeing, both additions here are lesser versions of what we saw in terms of architectural character and kind of those, the mass that we saw before and approved.
I would say too that the brick that we're talking about that's already there is historic brick, correct? The idea of having something adjacent to the historic brick that is not historic brick can go wrong, and that's why I seconded the motion to use the alternative material, not only because I think in some ways it's a, it's a good contrast to the historic buildings, but also it makes this very unique structure stand out, not in an unattractive way, but in a way that blends in to the context.
Is there any other discussion?
So could you restate the motion?
Okay, I think we are voting on the exterior material, and the motion was to go against staff and approve a metal material with a brick base.
And whatever typical staff conditions get appended to those.
Append to those, yes. So, does that, is that comfortable? Okay, so all those-
What's, what's the, what brick are you guys planning to use?
We still have to find that brick. I don't think we have any more of the historic brick.
Yeah, we have some, but not enough to-
Definitely not enough to do a whole brick building too. Okay, that's, I'm thinking with Lisa over here, just kind of how, how it's going to look, so, okay.
And I think these are all good points, you know, that we're hearing. We would never expect you to actually go back with historic brick on this building anyway. So in the previous application that was approved, where the brick was approved, I'm sure we were, it was staff, it'd come back to staff or color choice for the brick to get as close as you could to harmonize what's there, so.
Okay, so we're now going to vote on approving the metal siding with the brick base, and all those in favor say aye.
Ms. Chair, Ms. Chair, before you vote, Mr. Lester, did you want to include that condition of approval with this application?
I did not.
To return the brick, okay.
Well, yes, I would like to return, if this votes yes, I would like to return the brick base to staff for approval.
And I think, does the application call for the metal siding to be reviewed by staff?
The metal siding color is going to be a matte black.
Okay, so you're comfortable, okay.
So Commissioner Lester, if you would make an amendment?
Amendment, yes.
So I'd like to amend the motion to, that the brick color of the base would return to staff for approval.
Okay.
Second that.
Second that. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, so the ayes have it. So now we're voting on the main motion of the material and the base as amended to come back to staff, the brick to come back to staff. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you. So now we'll go to the doors next, and there is a modification from what was approved previously, and if you just want to state real quick about the height and, again-
Yes, the way the carousel is constructed inside, we cannot get the overhead doors to work in all locations. We can get them in some, but not all. We cannot get them, we are showing the opportunity, the option to do the coiling doors. We understand those look different. We would just have to increase the height of the building, which we would prefer not to do, to make sure those doors could work everywhere. We do like the idea of having those be able to open up. On a, it's a plaza outside of that, you could see on the site plan, we hope that's an active area for families, and being able to just really go in and out of that carousel building. As we mentioned, as an alternate, if we cannot do the coiling door, I don't know if we've written it into here, but we would like to do storefront and see if we could just have large doors on those openings as well.
Are there any citizens that want to speak to this part of the application? Or do you- I would just say, it appears to me that we're now voting on something that we really don't have a picture of. Is that a correct statement?
And then, as I mentioned before, Benton reminded me, I said it earlier, but if we reduce the height of those overhead doors, where we show the glass coiling doors, if we were to put an overhead door in there, we would likely need a little transom above it and a shorter door because the track would not be as long, and we would maybe be able to clear the carousel then, but you do not have a picture represented.
So is there a motion on this item?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to defer this item for more information, because I'd like to learn more about a storefront, if you're talking about maybe a courting opening, I'm not quite sure.
No, just double doors when I say storefront, it would just be a pair of double doors with a transom above. If, Emily, if you don't mind going back to the elevation, it's in some of the other openings where we don't have an overhead door, it would, see those two on the corner there, it would be something that would match that instead. It just won't fully open up.
I'll second the motion to defer.
I just think we would, to vote on that, we would need to see it to make a good decision on it.
Commissioner Lester?
So it has to date certain?
Yes, ma'am.
A date certain, yes, to the next voting meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission, which is March the-
11th.
11th. So we have a motion, a proper motion, and second to defer to March 11th.
And to invite the applicant to DRC.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it to defer. Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the transom?
We still have transoms to do.
Oh, and the transom, well, the transom will be part of that. I think we're talking about the windows across, do you call those transoms, the windows across the top? Oh, okay.
Yeah, the transoms that are here on, I think it's the north and south, they changed minimally from what was previously approved to this proposal.
Got you. Do you want to say something about that?
No, again, that just goes back to us changing the type of construction, and we have load-bearing CMU walls, and so it just limits the size of the openings.
Okay. Are there any citizens that want to speak to this part of the application? Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the transoms as proposed.
Thank you.
With staff comments.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item seven, discussion of relocation and an addition at 425 Boyd Mill Avenue. The staff would like to give their presentation.
So this application has attended several Design Review Committee meetings to discuss the proposal, and the DRC has attended a site visit at the property. The application proposes to relocate the existing accessory structure and then construct an addition to it. For the relocation of this portion of the application, it proposes to shift the existing structure 288 square feet, no, to shift the existing 288 square foot structure to the interior of the property. The application has incorporated the feedback from the past DRC meetings so that the structure is saved and its unique front features remain. The relocation of the structure is appropriate within the guidelines. For the addition, the application proposals, the application includes the proposal to construct a new 662 square foot addition to the existing 288 square foot accessory structure. Feedback on this application was incorporated from previous DRC meetings into this design. The importance of this historic accessory structure was emphasized during these meetings, and the addition is similar in form from the street as the original accessory structure appeared from the street. The principal building's footprint equates to 4,090 square foot, and the total square footage of the accessory structure with the addition will equate to 950 square feet. As proposed, the addition is not subordinate in size and mass as the form of the building will be taller than the original accessory structure. The proposed addition does not meet the intent of the guidelines. For the materials, the addition is proposed to be clad in wood siding and will utilize asphalt shingles. The proposal does not state what the material for the new windows and the foundation is proposed to be. As proposed, the materials meet the intent of the guidelines, but specification on the windows and the foundation is needed. Staff recommends denial of the application based on the following grounds: one should design alterations and additions so the entirety of the accessory structure is compatible and visually subordinate in size, mass, and height to the principal building they support, but in no case should they exceed one and a half stories. If the Historic Zoning Commission were to approve the application, there are following suggested conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. If the applicant would like to come forward, introduce yourself.
Good evening. Blake Daniels with Daniels Chandler. Would like to point out that we believe it is subordinate to the main structure following kind of the general guidelines of the historic code in the area. If we could go to the renderings on the site, let us sheet three. And we've worked hard, if you look in the bottom left, to maintain the exact kind of essence of what you see as you walk up and down the sidewalk, so that the actual garage you pull straight into off of the driveway, recognizing that what we're adding on to is essentially a shed that's already been altered in the past. The neighbor to the rear has a detached garage with a living space above it, and so does the neighbor to the left. So really- So really trying to just do similar things to everyone else in the nearby community while maintaining the historic integrity of what was there. The footprint of the existing shed is about 15 by 18, so it's not even functional for a modern day garage as is. So even if we added a two-car garage to it, we would be some, we would be more than, larger than the existing shed. There's no way we can be subordinate and maintain a garage use. So as it stands now, it is a shed that is falling apart. So we would like to relocate it, restructure it so that it is, it is maintained. It does get another 100 years of life. And by making that a large space on the ground level, it activates the backyard and activates that shed that no one's using currently.
Thank you. Are there any citizen comments to this application? If not, is there anyone who would like to entertain a motion on the application?
Madam Chair, I move to approve with staff comments one through four.
Is...
And the reason I'm going against staff, it seems the main objection has to be subordination to the main structure. And at 950 square feet, this, this building is subordinate in both height and in scale and square footage.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second that.
You second. Is, is there any discussion?
What's the, so I'm looking at this report. Is the existing footprint, footprint really 4,090 square feet? Or is that the square footage of the whole house upstairs and downstairs?
It's a large footprint of a house, so it's got large, large porches on it, so that really pushes that footprint.
Do we count the porches as part of the footprint for the garage? Okay. So the house is somewhere north of 7,000 square foot house?
It's a, I mean, it's a large house.
I'm looking at the site plan and I look at drawings every day. It's, I don't think the footprint's 4,090 square feet.
No, the porches squeeze in on it, but I would also say if we're looking at the garage that we're adding on, the condition space, if we're going condition to condition, it's still gonna be dramatically subordinate to. But total square footage? Total square footage of about 4,000, heated and cooled. But then we've got the, that doesn't include the porches, which are large.
Okay.
And it wraps the side.
I'd also like to commend the applicant. I mean, when we first heard this discussion in DRC, we were, we were hearing an applicant talk about demolishing a historic outbuilding and that was really not able to be used anymore because, because of a modern car trying to fit in a garage of the period. And I would also, I think the applicant's been very thoughtful in the design in incorporating it in such a way that you almost get the same sense of that same garage as you pull into the driveway. It was there historically, although now it's a two-car garage. I, I see a lot of design elements on it that complement historic district in the house. Another thing that I've always thought, where this house is, is located, Benelli Park took part of the backyard of this, this property. And when you see these pictures, you can see the back of the house almost right in their backyard. And I think part of having the structure at this size helps to mitigate some of that intrusion into their space. And overall, I might say where, where the windows are concerned, at the very back, seem a little unusual. But it is at the back, no one will ever see it. So overall, I, I think it's, it's a very thoughtful design for the historic, historic district.
My question would be, is what is the difference in height between the ridge line at the top of the house and...
It's one foot shorter than the ridge of the main house. But sets much further back, so visually it's gonna feel lower as well.
Okay, so I must, so when, when you look at the rendering, which shows it from the street view, I mean, the, the way it's, it's displayed, it looks like, I mean, it barely gets to the, the back eve of the house, but you're saying it's within one foot of the, of the ridge line of the actual structure in height?
Yes, but if we look at it in, in that elevation profile, and we modeled this multiple times because we kind of thought the same thing. When we rendered it, it looks like the bottom left, but where you're seeing roof lines and elevations in perspective this way, whereas when we look at the elevation that shows the heights diagrammatically, it does not have perspective to it, so it, it does push it taller. But it is subordinate to the main house.
By one foot?
By one foot.
And the rear windows, what we're not seeing, but what is their relationship to the house behind in Benelli Park?
It overlooks their kind of entry court for their, their driveway.
But if, if it, if it is within one foot of the eve, of the actual ridge line of the house, I don't think you would see any part of the, of the house behind you. I mean, that's why I'm questioning how this is rendered.
That's a great question for younger people in our office that do really good things with technology. But I do know it does push smaller. Now, how much of the house behind it you see? To be questioned.
So we have a motion, yes.
There's a motion on the floor that's been seconded. It's a motion to approve with staff comments, one through four.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason was given.
Yes.
And so as of now, we need a vote.
Vote, yes. So all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no.
No.
I'm gonna have to say no.
No.
I'll go with the rest, no.
Okay, so it fails as presented. Is, um, what action? Is there, would you, I guess, come back?
Yeah, I would, I would move to defer it to the next meeting on March 11th.
And I will second that.
And, and what I'd say about the deferral, I think just a bit more information in making sure that all the numbers all check out. I actually like, love the drawings, they're beautiful and I like the design. I like the concept of what you've done, have no problem with that. I just, I don't feel like I have enough data here. And you provided a lot, but there's some questions about the perspective. There's questions about the footprint of the house in my mind. So if we can get just that real, actual footprint, that would be good and I'd feel a lot better making a decision then.
What, what I would be looking for is the relationship of the back of this building to the neighbor since you are proposing windows. And I really, I can't tell what that is. So there is a motion to defer to the next meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission and I think recommending, I don't have to, to come to Design Review. But all those in favor of deferrals say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. I think you have direction.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at item eight, of which is consideration of new construction at 1845 William Campbell Court, the Historic Magnolia Hall subdivision and its lot seven. And Emily?
So this proposal includes the construction of a two-story cross-gabled residence with colonial revival architectural styled features. The Historic Magnolia Hall is 34 feet, nine inches in height, measured from grade to the roof ridge. The application provides the height of the building from the first floor elevation to the roof ridge, which is 32 feet, four inches. Additionally, there is a two-foot increase in grade elevation on Lot 7 compared to Magnolia Hall. The location of Lot 7 is directly beside the mansion. The materials of the proposed new construction are listed as predominantly brick and lapped siding, shingle roof, stone foundation, two stone chimneys, cementitious siding on the front porch details, and another brick chimney. The colors of the material were not included within the application. For the architectural features, dormers shall be sat back a minimum of one foot from the exterior wall of a front or side elevation per zoning ordinance requirements. The proposed wall dormers on the front elevation should be altered to be roof dormers instead of wall dormers to comply with the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of this application with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant come forward? Well, we will not vote on this since we do not have representation from the applicant. So I guess move this to the next agenda.
Maybe if they show before the, before the end, we can come back to it.
Did you have a comment, Kelly?
If we come back to it at the end, I think I would like law's interpretation on whether or not it just isn't heard or, or there needs to be a vote on it.
Sure.
Sure. Okay. So we are to item nine, Consideration of signage monument at 1205 Columbia Avenue. And staff?
The application includes the proposal to install a 71-inch granite monument sign at 1205 Columbia Avenue facing Carter Hill Park. The proposed sign is classified as a monument sign per the zoning ordinance and the zoning administrator. The zoning ordinance permits one monument sign per lot and is limited to six feet tall. As proposed, it appears to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Typically, a sign can be issued an administrative certificate of appropriateness if the proposal meets the intent of the design guidelines. However, the design guidelines consider monument signs to be inappropriate, monument signs to be an inappropriate sign type in the historic preservation overlay district. In cases when the design guidelines and zoning ordinance conflict, the design guidelines take precedence. The Historic Zoning Commission may approve a sign that does not meet the design guidelines if it does meet the zoning ordinance. And here is an additional photo of it, where it is, its proposed location. Typically, monument signs are located in the front yard near the street for maximum visibility for motorists. The sign is proposed to be located in the rear yard of the property behind the existing building and the driveway parking lot, so it won't be as visible from Columbia Avenue. Since the proposed sign is located within the HPO, the sign would require a certificate of appropriateness and a sign permit. Since a monument sign is not an approved sign type per the design guidelines, the recommendation would be denial of the application. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the application based on the following grounds. That the proposed sign type is considered an inappropriate sign type within the design guidelines. If the Historic Zoning Commission were to approve the application, there are recommend, there are recommended, uh, conditions. Thanks.
Thank you. If the applicant would want to come forward and introduce yourself and comment?
I'm Laurie McPeak with the Battle of Franklin Trust, who's the owner of 1205 Columbia, and I'm gonna defer to our historian and CEO.
Okay.
Hey, everybody. I think most everyone knows who I am, Eric Jacobson. I'm the CEO of the Battle of Franklin Trust. As Laurie indicated, we own 1205 Columbia Ave., that's the Miller House. So I, I had a long conversation with Kelly, so I wanna thank staff for their thoughtful comments on how we got to where we are. And as I've been thinking about this for several days, you know, nobody 20 years ago would have ever even had this conversation because the battlefield was lost. And so we're having a conversation really about a monument, which is not a sign, but signs are all that we've ever put on the battlefield as we've reclaimed it piece by piece. And the story about how we got to a, a real monument is, is one for another day, but I think that's where we are. So going forward, as I said to Kelly and I've talked to several others, I think there's probably a conversation to be had about language that would be more appropriate within the guidelines for things like this in the future. But that, of course, doesn't immediately solve our problem today. But what I do wanna say is when the Texas Historical Commission approached us about this, we were, of course, aware that there were no such things on the battlefield. I talked to Kelly at length about the process by which we went through the USAT statue and the, the mainline markers which are now on Columbia Avenue. So that was, well, the USAT marker went through Arts Commission, went through Zoning Commission, eventually was approved by BOMA. This process was a little different. I first went to the, I went to the Tennessee Historical Commission because they hold the easement on the city property. The Historical Commission and the city were concerned about it being too close to Columbia Avenue comments that were made. So since we own that property and it is part of the battlefield, we thought this might be one of the easiest ways to solve the problem, but here we are. So back to the Historical Commission, I think one of the things that I learned through this is this organization has placed monuments in many places. And I'll share, bear with me for a second, 19 battlefields. Vicksburg, Chickamauga, Kennesaw Mountain, Mansfield, Louisiana, Antietam, Pea Ridge, Bentonville, Gettysburg, Fort Donelson, Shiloh, Anthony, Texas, The Wilderness, Galveston, Raymond, Mississippi, Rolets, Kentucky, Richmond, Kentucky, Corinth, Mississippi, Gainesville, Virginia, and Second Bull Run. The Historical Commission was very clear that they believe this type of monument added to the integrity of the battlefield. And our hope is that by adding language within the guidelines is that other states that had troops that fought at the Battle of Franklin, like Ohio or Tennessee or a litany of others, whether it's Carter Hill or Eastern Flank, would be able to have a particular set of parameters that they, they would know whether it's next year or 50 years from now, or 40 years from now when it's the 200th anniversary of the Battle of Franklin, that they won't be kind of stuck in this place that we are. So we, we are, we understand staff's recommendation, but we are hoping for your approval. And I think Julian Bibb is gonna have a few comments about some other things related to the monument. Thank you.
I, I have a, a number of people wanting to speak. And Julian, you are the next one on the list, if you wanted to come forward.
Thank you. I'm Julian Bibb. And I very much appreciate Kelly and Emily and staff's review of this. And it's kind of a unique question that we've grown into, thank goodness we've grown into this. I think back to the old days, I think Mary and I are the only two in this room that were fighting, head supporters that are in this room, who were fighting to fight. When we first created historic overlay districts and historic design guidelines and created the, Connie Clark, this is how old it is, was the city attorney when we drafted all those provisions that were the very beginning of this process that is so important to our community. And I love what has happened and the rudimentary work that we had back then has grown into the remarkable guidelines that were adopted last, well, about a year and a half ago. And it's, so it's great to see Franklin grow into that. It makes me feel a little old. Mary, I won't lump you into feeling old. Those days, we had a lot of citizens speaking out against the work that, that we were doing, but it sure... speaking out against the work that we were doing, but it sure has turned out to be wonderful. This is a unique question because this monument, you know, we've seen some other monuments, right, other than the monuments on Winstead Hill, which some of you may have seen, those are monuments. But we've seen the Cannonball Stack is out in the, in Carter Hill Battlefield Park. We've got the Monument to the Enslaved out at Carnton. We've got the Veterans Monument that sits over right at Five Points. And then we've got a unique monument that sits beside the tomb of the, or the grave of the unknown Civil War soldier, which are those gigantic pillars from the nineteen, from the eighteen fifty-six State Capitol that are remarkable. But we really haven't had to deal with monuments and battlefield monuments. So I thought, what is this piece of granite that Texas, the state of Texas wants us to erect? And so I thought maybe it would be good to say what a monument is. A monument is that type of structure explicitly created to commemorate a person or event, or which has become relevant to a social group as part of their remembrance of historic times or cultural heritage due to its historic artistic, political, or architectural importance. And although it's not quite dispositive of the issues under our design guidelines and for your consideration, I think it is an important acknowledgement to know that monuments on national battlefields are prescribed by the Secretary of the Interior. And this Texas monument that we're seeking to gain approval of, to gain a certificate of appropriateness for, is a monument that has met the strict guidelines of both the Secretary of Interior and the National Park Service in each of the battlefield applications that it has, has made. So it's, it's passed through some fairly strict guidelines. And then I thought, as we think about monuments, that it was important to look at, hey, what did other battlefields have? And so I looked at a number of them, but I took this language out of Stones River because I think it describes what we're trying to do. The commemorative landscape and monuments at Stones River National Battlefield reflect efforts to remember those who fought in the conflict, document events of the battle, and understand the legacy of the American Civil War. And it has some addition, it describes their monuments, and ends with, these monuments also provide opportunities to reflect on and understand the history of commemoration of the American Civil War. I think this is a monument, I don't think it's a monument sign, it's not a sign like Izzy's or First Bank where you see the sign sticking out there on that platform. It's not intending to draw people off, motorists passing by to stop and come into a bank or retail establishment, or any other thing like that. What it really is, is it's sitting on our battlefield to, as you walk around the park and you're seeing the cannons, or the caisson that's there, or the cannonball stack, or the historic markers, you also see this marker. And Eric's right, we hope that this would be something that other states would do. Ohio and other states do this from time to time. The most recent one I'm looking, was looking at is a remarkable application from the first Nebraska, from the state of Nebraska to put a monument at Fort Donelson. It, that application would provide guidance for Franklin if we want to adopt, and hopefully at a later date, adopt specific standards. We think it's important, what we would like to do is have you all issue a certificate of appropriateness for the state of Texas monument. And we would like it to be without the requirement that we seek a sign permit. That was one of the recommendations. We would just like you to issue a certificate of appropriateness. We would like the condition that if there are any changes to location, which there won't be, or any changes to the language, which we don't think there'll be, any changes at all to that granite monument, that they would have to go to the historic planner and who could make decisions on our own or refer it back to you. We think that recommendation is totally appropriate. But we would like to gain your approval. And then as I think about the future of our battlefield and the fact that we're going to have historic markers, and we're going to have historic elements, and we're going to have historic markers, I think it would be nice separately, not as part of this approval of the certificate of appropriateness, for this commission to recommend that the process of drafting applications that deal with both historic markers and monuments, that we develop guidelines. Eric Jacobson and I have discussed how important it will be to have appropriate space, paths, markers, and language. And I think that would help, that second recommendation, again, separate recommendation about the future, is I think something that the Historic Zoning Commission could help initiate the process. Mr. Harper will probably fall on your shoes and the city attorney's shoes, and we're glad to provide the materials that we have about how other places have done it. Metro requires an application for historic marker, the State Capitol requires monument applications if you want to put a monument on the grounds of the Capitol. We've got lots of guidelines by national battlefield parks, as well as other state battlefield parks that we could help with, and we're delighted to do that. But at any rate, I would ask that you issue a certificate of appropriateness for this monument and that we not be required to get a sign permit. And that any changes go back to staff.
Thank you. Jim Roberts? We try to do two minutes, but I think that this is a bigger conversation with us.
Yes. This is an interesting perspective, folks. But tonight, I'm Jim Roberts, thirteen twenty-seven Adams Street. I come presently the board chair for the Battle of Franklin Trust. And some of you remember my, some of my background of about twenty years in the sign business, and I don't believe that I've ever remember a monument sign or historical marker being classified as a monument sign, but that's where we are. But this, this particular monument or historic monument, marker is, in some of the data I think you have or on the screen, is a distance from Columbia Avenue of a hundred and eighty-four feet looking straight in, and it's a distance from Claiborne and Columbia Avenue of three hundred and plus feet looking back in. You've also seen information that shows the, a figure that was placed, that stood up there and was placed, and you can see the representation of that figure and how little it can be seen from these, these two streets. So I think the real purpose of this monument is for the people that do participate and walk through Carter Hill Park can see this marker as well as all of the other interpretive signage and the caisson and the cannons that all adorn that, that piece of property. So I would encourage you to approve this certificate of appropriateness and like Eric and Julian have alluded to, to also work, let's work to better define how these types of markers can fit within our historic guidelines. Thank you.
Okay. We have Ron Crutcher.
I'm Ron Crutcher. I live at thirteen twenty-four Adams Street, which is less than two blocks from this park. I am all for this monument being put up. It will aid in the expansion of the park, which we need as much green space in Franklin as we can get. And I see no objections to it. It is not a distraction from Columbia Pike or Claiborne Street. And with that, I will sit down.
Thank you. Angela Calhoun?
Angela Calhoun, I'm on the Board of Franklin's Charge. I was a founding member, lived here in Franklin for over thirty years, and I've been involved in a lot of preservation projects here. And I'm just wanting to speak briefly in support of the approval of the appropriateness of this monument. For me, the important factors were that it has already passed stringent guidelines from the Secretary of the Interior, has been approved by the Tennessee Historical Commission, and for all of the other reasons that Julian and Eric have laid out so well. I think it's also important to me that this monument lends a feeling of presence and solemnity to the visitor's experience on this property, and I think that's exactly what we are doing this work for. So I would ask you to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Ravner?
Good evening. I'm Bob Ravner, downtown Franklin, two-two-one Third Avenue South. I am also a member of the Franklin's Charge Board, also a former member of the Franklin Civil War Historical Commission, very involved locally in downtown Franklin with the parks. And while not as knowledgeable as our fellow historians here and those who have spent a lot of time working on the restoration and the reclamation of our battlefield, I also support this opportunity because it is, I see it as, not only the deliberations and the detail that goes into putting something like this up, I think it only enhances the story of what went on here so many years ago. And I, for one, as I walk the battlefield, want to learn more about it, as I'm sure many of our visitors do, and this is a way for them to continue that learning process. And as we all know, if we don't continue to learn from our history, we are doomed to repeat it. So I support this effort. Thank you.
Those are all the citizen comments I have. Is there anyone that didn't bring theirs up here? Okay. Is there a motion regarding this application?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the historical marker monument sign with staff conditions.
Okay. So you are going against?
I am, and I understand maybe staff's position, that when we think of a monument sign, we think of something you advertise on. So it's advertising a product, a service, something someone's offering. But in this instance, we're talking about really a historical marker or historical monument that's meant to inform the public about a historic event in Franklin. And I see them as two separate issues.
Okay. Is there a second?
I would second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes. I have two questions.
Really quickly, Commissioner, I would just like to remind the commission that we're not to discuss content-
Right.
-of what's on the signage, just simply the sign itself.
I had that conversation today with staff, and content would only be approved by the property owner whose land it was on. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Or, in the case of the city, if it went on city property, it would come to BOMA for approval.
That's correct.
But that is not in our purview.
That's correct.
Can we ask why it's going, wanting to be in a certain location? Yeah? Okay.
Yes. The chosen location, so they're, luckily for us, all of the Texas troops were on the east side of Columbia Pike, which is right where the monument is located. The Texans were a brigade of about nine hundred men commanded by Hiram Granberry. He was one of the six Confederate generals killed in this battle in Pat Claiborne's division, who was also killed, and Claiborne Street is named for. And they largely hit that area east of Columbia Pike and roughly going east to about where the cotton gin was. So they slammed into that area, and actually, that marker would be about the center point of about as far as the Texans got that evening before they were pushed back. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or conversation, comments?
I was going to ask a question from staff. So one of the applicants mentioned possibly bypassing the sign permit requirement, and can you refresh our memory on what, how that would fit in with this particular application?
Following approval of a COA for a sign in the historic district, it would get submitted to the BNS Building and Neighborhood Services Department for a sign application. Part of that requirement is a COA, and so it would be issued a sign permit with the, with an approved COA for this, for the sign. Was that your question? Did I get at it?
Yes. So in other words, if, if Neighborhood Services knows that, let's just say the motion passes today, tonight, then that's all that's required to get the sign permit?
Yes. The sign appears to meet the zoning ordinance for a monument sign, so that's what they would be reviewing and making sure that it had the appropriate COA. It's the design guidelines that may not address this unique situation with this specific sign with its characteristics, and that's something that you may want to consider as you move forward with the design guidelines.
But the way counsel could speak to this, but the way things stand right now, the path to getting it approved is to have a certificate of appropriateness approved to apply for a sign permit. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, as far as the sign permit's concerned, this commission wouldn't have to worry about it, for lack of a better way of saying it. You all are, have the purview to approve a certificate of appropriateness, and then after that, it would go to Building and Neighborhood Services.
Right.
So for tonight's purposes, all we're talking about is a COA.
Okay.
Yeah. And I would agree that our guidelines fall short when it comes to something of this nature, and that's why I'll be voting as proposed.
I think the semantics of, we have a sign type called a monument sign, which just means that, I think most people, whether it was intentional or not, see that as, well, it's a, something made of masonry, you got some rock or brick sign. But that same language applies to you all, but it's definitely a different thing. And I agree with Mr. Laster on his motion. You know, I think these particular battlefield sites that are being interpreted, if it's just a grouping of buildings, I think you lose that kind of human nature of what really happened, and these are the type of things that bring kind of that human connection back to a site. And that's kind of why I'm on this board. If it wasn't for people experiencing all this, then there wouldn't be a need for us, you know? And I think this speaks directly to a people in a place. So it's different than, you know, I want somebody to eat at my restaurant, or go to my church, or whatever. It's a different thing.
Okay. So all those in favor of approving a certificate appropriateness for item nine, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I know, I saw that. Okay, item, we skipped over item six, but we, we see you, so we will now do item six. Not, it's not item six, wait. It's item-
Eight.
Eight, excuse me. We will now go back to item eight.
Okay. So this proposal includes the construction of a two-story cross-gabled residence with colonial revival architectural styled features. Historic Magnolia Hall is 34 feet, nine inches in height, measured from the grade to the roof ridge. Application provides the height of the building from the first floor elevation to the roof ridge, which is 32 feet, four inches. Additionally, there's a two-foot increase in grade elevation on Lot 7 compared to Magnolia Hall. The location of Lot 7 is directly beside the mansion. Materials of the proposed new construction are listed as predominantly brick and lap siding, shingle roof, stone foundation, two stone chimneys, cementitious siding on the front porch details, and a brick chimney. The colors of the materials were not included within the application. The dormers shall be set back a minimum of one foot from the exterior wall of a front or side elevation per the zoning ordinance requirements. The proposed wall dormers on the front elevation should be altered to be roof dormers instead of wall dormers to comply with the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of this application with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. If the applicant will introduce themselves and-
Jennifer Lombard, 906 Studio. So we had a few changes to this from DRC, not anything too major, but just taking into account the feedback of the commission. We got rid of the front-facing gable and tried to make this a little bit more of a typical example of the type of house. So overall, we think it's feeling a little better and a little more like what you guys had requested in the beginning. We also pushed that screen porch back so it does not sit in front of the front facade of the house any longer. The one, I think we're in agreement with all of the staff recommendations, with the exception of the wall dormers. We feel like there's quite a few examples of those that we've included in our application within Franklin. We also feel like it's appropriate to the style, and if we did push those back two feet from the front facade, the windowsills would go up to about seven feet above the floor, and they'd be kind of buried in the roof. So the proportions would not really work at that point, because we're at a story and a half. So appreciate y'all's consideration and time.
Thank you. Are there any citizens that wish to speak to this application? If not, is there someone that would like to make a motion?
Could we get some clarification from staff?
Yes.
Quickly? The staff report talks about these wall dormers that they're asking for relief on, and it said per zoning requirements? Is that something we can, where we are allowed to trump? Or is that something, since it's a zoning requirement, or is it a historic zoning requirement?
It is a zoning requirement as part of transitional features. There would need to be something specific in the design guidelines that would conflict with that requirement, to take precedence over that requirement.
Okay. So is, is that a yes or a no?
There doesn't appear to be anything in the design guidelines that conflicts with-
Right. So I think that the answer is we don't have the ability to, okay. Understood, thank you.
I thought that was a historic, not a zoning.
Okay. So is there someone who wishes to make a motion on the application?
I'd like to make a motion to defer-
To?
To a date certain, March 11.
Okay.
And I'll explain if, I'll explain my reasoning. The dormer discussion is going to require a change in the renderings, correct?
Yes, because if they were to change them from wall dormers to roof dormers, it would be altered, and it wouldn't look exactly how it's shown right now.
They'd stay in the same locations, they'd just slide up a little bit and back. So I don't know that it's a completely drastic change, but yes, it would be a change.
I mean, I feel more comfortable approving something that we're actually looking at, so.
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Is that a second? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to defer to the next historic zoning meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
I would encourage you all to come to design review. That's really the place we can have a conversation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And if y'all want to come, I'll need to know why.
Yeah, I think this one's been clear enough.
Okay.
That's it? Right? No, we got the 10. Yeah. Consideration of alterations at 417 Boyd Mill Avenue. Staff, if you would like to.
So this application includes the intent to replace an exterior wall, replace the foundation, utilize cement board siding, and replace windows on the building due to mold. The application does not provide information that is needed to provide a recommendation. The condition of the existing siding, foundation, and the windows have not been provided. Information should be provided as to where on the building these alterations are being proposed. Additionally, information from a mold remediation specialist is needed as to why complete replacement of all the materials is proposed, is the proposed solution instead of repair or treatment using other means. The guidelines recommend that one should maintain as much historic integrity as possible. Preserving and maintaining a feature is the priority. If preservation is not possible, it is better to repair a feature rather than to replace it, as to maintain a higher degree of integrity for the historic property. Exterior alterations should not impair the historic integrity of buildings, site features, or the historic districts. Staff recommends deferral of the application due to lack of information within the submit.
Thank you. Is there someone here representing this project?
Yes, my name is David Judy. I'm the general contractor on this. In this picture, actually, the, these four windows would not be being replaced, they would just be taken out and reinstalled. Excuse me. The house was built in 1901, and so in one of the pictures, you can see the level of the floor has dropped off dramatically at the exterior wall here. There is a mold report, I believe, that was uploaded, I think, showing the levels of mold in the wall. Because of the sagging of that exterior wall, back on those, the pictures of the four sides, you can see there is separation around the trim of the windows where water is coming in still. The floor has sagged at least an inch and some change. There you can see it on the right side of the level, that's a four-foot level, you can see how far it's sagged there. So the idea is to support that wall. In 2016, this house was renovated, except for this part of it. And so the floor has been sagging. The idea is to remove the exterior wall to reinforce with a new footer, both the exterior wall, and use as close to matching materials as we possibly can. The addition has the hardy cementus fiberboard siding on it, and so we would use those to match it. Thank you.
Are there any citizens who wish to comment on this application? If not, is there a motion that the commission would like to make?
I would, I mean, I would move to approve, as proposed, this, what I see as in-kind replacement, based on the applicant's explanation of what material would be left and such.
I would second.
And I'm looking at the pictures. I think the staff report said something about an expert, it looks like there's a report in here. It would have been nice to see where this is on the house, but I think I can tell from the pictures, it's around one of the sides. Is that, is that true?
Yes. This, I think a couple pictures up, it'll actually show you the, this is from all, yeah, there's this set of, the bank of windows right there. We have tried to address this before. The framing of this is original, and those windows are replacements already, but they're fine, we can go back with them. But the actual framing here is original framing, and the windows are not sitting on any kind of framing, and that's why those are also sagging. The flashing is separating.
So that, and then the molions there that are, look like they're wrapped in aluminum, are you going to replace that with hardy trim as well, or?
The actual siding here is aluminum. We'd be going back with the hardy that would match the-
So just this L shape is aluminum?
Just the L shape, yes. The molions would go back with the same, the metal flashing. We would keep everything as we can. Around the windows is aluminum, and the siding would just change to the lap siding, the hardy cementus.
I might, I might prefer hardy moles, so they look like trim. If it can be done, it would match the siding better.
Yeah.
And be more appropriate for the district, at least.
That would, that would be my comment, if this is a repair, which it appears it is.
Yes.
And you're going back with the windows, which you say are replacement. Between all the trim around the windows that is aluminum, could that be replaced with the hardy plank like you're doing below?
Yes, ma'am.
So I should offer that up as an amendment? So I've moved to amend the main motion by adding all window casings, sills, aprons, and moles be hardy trim.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
Okay. So now we have the main motion as amended.
So, so hardy is the, that's their only option, hardy. If they wanted to do wood, they couldn't do wood.
Yeah, I think they've just asked for hardy, because it's on the house.
Yes. Because the addition to the left of the picture that was done in 2016, it's all hardy everything. The only thing that still has the metal aluminum and flashing is the exist, is the, was the original, and this whole wall would change to match the new.
Well, I think part of the water infiltration's coming from the way that the aluminum is done, and also the way the windows were done.
Absolutely.
From my experience of working on historic houses, the aluminum lets the water get behind it.
It can't get out.
And it can't go anywhere.
Yeah, and, I mean, the application's not super, super detailed, but I also like the idea of homeowners being able to do this type of maintenance on their house without an elaborate set of drawings and an architect and all this stuff. I think it's, what he's asking is reasonable. I think we're on the amendment. You know, I, I stand beside kind of what I said. I think the hardy is what they've asked for.
Okay.
Not that they couldn't use something else, but if that's what you all are hoping to use, I think I-
Okay. So we have a amendment and a second. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Now we're back to the main motion.
As amended.
As amended.
So, so I have a few, few other questions on this.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, you're showing where, where you have the elevation drop in the floor. So was this, was this part, what we're looking at, is this enclosed? Was this a porch at one time?
Not, not that's, not that I understand that it was. This was part of the original house, and I believe this was part of the original kitchen.
So at some point, someone added this large bank of windows in that, in that area? Because since you have that porch to the right of this-
Correct.
-it almost has the appearance of being, being a side porch.
The, from, I don't know, I don't know if it was part of the exterior. I believe it was still part of the interior, because the framing around those windows is the original nominal two-by-fours. So if it was exterior at some point, it was changed many years ago, when we still had this, the regular two-by-fours.
And the reason I bring that up, because if it was a porch, and that was its intended perch, purpose, it would have a slope on it. It would have more of a slope.
Right.
And, you know, the only way I've, I've known to correct that is either you put a floor on top, or you go, so what I'm going to say is just jacking the structure up. If that's the case, it might cause more pressure. So you'd want to check to see if those actual floor joists do follow the same, the same angle as the porch that you see. If that's the case, you might actually have to sister more, more material to it to level it up, and then put floor it back.
So the, where the level is, where it's flush and it tips off, right underneath there, there's a, there's a double two-by-12 girder that they put in, in the crawl space, whenever they did the addition in 2016, to shore up some of those, some of the issues in the floor. So underneath there, they've got the double two-by-12 with the metal posts, four-inch, I think they're four-inch posts, and I think that's just, this is just showing the exterior wall still moving.
Yeah, they were probably trying to, to take care of deflection. They were probably getting a lot of bounce in that area. So there's one of the other photographs that I see. So I see mold remediation. Am I seeing that in some of those photographs?
Yes.
But in one of these, I see an old window, an actual window.
You may, yes.
And is that part of what you're doing? Is that part of the scope of this work, or is it just what we've seen in these four banks of windows?
If you could pull that up, so I just, you know, do you know which window you're referring to?
Well, you know, there are a lot of pictures in here. It actually almost looks like a bay of some kind.
Yes, there's a, that's in the room opposite of this one. There's a guest room that has three bay windows. It's, yes, right above that picture. There's three old windows that were, I think, either original, that is, that is part of this, where they would want to remove those and replace them. The wall is fine, the actual windows have been painted so many times, are painted shut. The ropes have broken, so they wanted to remove, replace those windows with like ones.
And that's part of this application as well?
Yes, yes, sir.
And looking at the photographs, where I just see the bottom of the window, the rails and the stiles, I mean, they look to be in pretty good shape to me. And usually, we recommend that historic windows be maintained, repaired, you know, the weights put back in them, the ropes made to work, and that's usually the recommendation. And this bay window, is it on the front of the house?
No, it is on the west side.
So it's on the side?
Yes, sir. It is on the, the west side, about halfway, 23, 25 feet back from the face. So the front of the house faces Boyd Mill. This is on the west side, 25 feet back, and it does stick out a little bit.
Into the, the view shed, where you see it from the street.
Yes. Now, it's, it's tough, because there is a brow there, and you're coming over, if you're coming, it would be east from Benelli Park. There is a bit of a brow with a, that it's in a large oak tree that kind of blocks some of that view, but, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
Do we take this into, would that make sense at this point?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I wasn't aware of the, the other window replacements. I think we could certainly, when everyone's ready, vote on-
That's what-
That, that-
Right.
The one area of the house.
I feel like there was a conversation, and seemed to be some consensus around the repair of the three windows, putting hardy plank surrounds-
Yep.
-on the windows and doing that repair. And I think we had a motion and a-
So what we could do is we could some, we could have a motion to reconsider-
Reconsider.
And, and just start, start new.
Okay, let's have a motion.
We haven't voted on the current one, we could amend it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was considering, that we amended that the applicant retain and repair their, their current historic windows, and not, and not provide a seal, certificate of appropriateness for window replacement. for window replacement of that bay window, whether you have historic windows.
Yeah, and I would, I would second that amendment.
That amendment, okay, so all those in favor of the amendment that on the historic window portion, that they be repaired?
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed or none? So we're now back to the main motion, twice amended. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the main motion, twice amended.
Before, before we get to it?
Yes, do you have a comment?
Are there any other caveats that we really haven't considered? Any other scope of work besides what we discussed that you planned to do in repairs?
No, sir.
Specific to the shell, really. Shell in sight, yeah.
That's it.
And, you know, a lot of your original material that you still have of your true two-by-fours, because I'm sure that's what you have, is a true two-by-four.
Yes.
That, uh, a lot of that could be, could be retained. I'm not making an amendment for this, but could be retained, and, and other two-by-four, just sistered up to it. Your seals may be different, but I'm just saying. Okay, now we're ready.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
You could.
Thank you. Um, for the, the foundation repair, will any of the exterior foundation be altered? Or is it just kind of like interior, like where you won't be able to see it being shored up?
It will be altered in order to be able to tie in the new floor system on top of it.
Okay, so, like, if you're looking from the outside of the property, looking at the foundation, will anything be altered?
Yes, the, the, the block that they had just infilled in between, that will be taken out, a footer, and then a new block wall. So it'll go back looking the same.
Okay.
It'll just actually have a footer underneath it this time, instead of just block to cover it up.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll have a, you'll have a footer and then a pier?
A footer and then a, the, the CMU wall that goes up.
So you'll have a CMU wall, a continuous foundation.
Correct.
And not just a pier.
Correct, yes.
And that will be, is that, is that what I'm, I would see behind the, uh, the bushes that are in front of those four bank windows?
Correct.
And so if you were to see this without any kind of landscaping, you would just, you'd just see block?
Correct. That's what's existed.
Which is what you see now.
Correct.
Yes.
So it sounds like if there were piers at one time.
There were.
Then it was probably porch. Doesn't mean that it wasn't, that it hasn't been a room for a very long time.
Correct.
Uh, but, yeah, I mean, it, it looks like it's old, but, um, doesn't mean that it wasn't a porch ninety years ago.
It was very popular when there became, uh, electric washing machines to close those areas in. Which is what I suspect.
Yeah, I do too. And it almost appears to be an exterior chimney that was tapped to make it into a, a working chimney. But I don't know, it just kind of looks that way, from the, looking outside in.
But I think the pictures indicate the repairs are needed.
Yes.
So, we, is there any more discussion on the motion, twice amended and clarified, I think?
Feel good about it.
Okay, so, we have the emotion, the, the motion, and with, uh, applicable staff comments, the ones that are applicable, given that we're going against staff, is that correct? Okay.
I, I just have a question. Does the, do you have any questions about what, what we're talking about here in terms of your parameters and, and?
No, ma'am, the, when it comes to even just the aluminum, we were just going back, back with exactly what was there, but I prefer the hardy myself as well. We just tried to keep it as close to what was there as possible, so.
And you understood what Mr. Laster was saying about the, the bay windows?
Yes.
To repair them?
Just repairing them.
Okay.
They're, you know, like you said, the weights have been broken off, and some of the rope, but we'll repair those. We will not remove them and replace them.
So the general intent of the motion, twice amended, is this is a repair project?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are to the end. Uh, is there, um, a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.